All right, planning board, we are live, we are recording, phone lines are opened, go forth.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to East Hampton Town's Planning Board Regular and Work Session for November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a bit of ambitious agenda today, including a public hearing, we have three items on for work session and a fourth, including the Wayne Scott Commercial Center preliminary supplemental draft environmental impact statement completeness review, as well as some regular meeting items. So we're going to jump in with a public hearing for McDonald Griffin subwaiver. Do we have proper posting on that? We do. Okay, great. All right, so Chris, that's you, and Jen, that's you for the board, correct?
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the East Hampton Town Planning Board on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. The application is the McDonald Griffin subwaiver. The size and location of the project is fifty-four thousand four hundred ninety-four square feet or one point two five one acres, located at nine eight one Springs Fire Police Road, East Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map number three hundred dash three nine dash sixteen dash nineteen. The application is to divide divide the existing lot into two parcels. Parcel one is proposed as twenty-eight thousand one hundred six square feet, and parcel two is proposed as twenty thousand zero zero two square feet.
Okay, thanks, Jen. All right, and is the applicant with us? Okay, very good, thank you. So we're gonna start with Chris, give it to give us a quick brief on what's what this is all about.
Sure, thank you. Pretty simple project. Here's the subject property, nine eighty-one Springs Fire Police Road. Then, as Jen mentioned, it's to divide the one point two five acre parcel to two properties. I already went over the lot sizes. Parcel's currently improved with a two-story residence shown on the seat certificate of occupancy from twenty twenty-three. There's also a shed near the proposed common driveway, which the planning board and applicant agreed would be removed as a condition of approval. Site zone B residence and partially cleared as indicated on the map here, which conforms with the town code, so there's no further issues on our end.
Okay, thank you. All right, do many members of the public wish to be heard on this matter, the McDonald Griffin subwaiver? Okay, Matt, is there anyone on the phone who wants to be heard on this matter?
Please stand by.
And this is Matt Chapman calling from L T V, making sure that all the lines are open and clear, in which they are, and you have zero additional callers. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we should call for closure of the public hearing, Jen.
A second.
All in favor? The public hearing is closed. All right, thank you. So we're gonna dive into the work session then. We've had a request to make a change to the order of of the applications, and we will actually go ahead and do that very thing, but I'm gonna make a motion to make that change, which is is that we'll do eco acres after Wayne Scott Wambles and then Elite Towers and then the Wayne Scott Commercial Center.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed and carried. All right, so the first of those items is Wayne Scott Wambles Two LLC Site Plan Modification. Will for the planning board, Bruce for, sorry, Planning Department, Bruce for the planning board. Tell us about it, Will.
So this is a modification seeking approval of an existing gravel walkway on the subject property and over a flag strip portion of the neighboring residential property covered by easement to connect to an adjacent commercial property. The site is located on Montauk Highway and Wayne Scott Zone A residence, considered one hundred percent clear of natural vegetation and is a type-two action pursuant to secret. The site is improved with a one-story office building, roof patio, parking area, and dumpster. This modification for the subject site involves a walkway on a separate neighboring parcel. Both parcels are highlighted in this image in the blue, and this little center strip is the residential parcel flag strip. In order for the modified walkway to be approved for both sites and to obtain C O's for both sites, the applicant must submit a second modification request for the neighboring site. The subject walkway will cross over an easement which permits a walkway over the neighboring flag strip portion of a residential property. However, no documentation of consent from the neighbor was received as part of the submission, and the applicant should provide such documentation. The submitted survey does not include lot or total lot coverages, and the subject path is not labeled as proposed or to be approved. Additionally, a fence is shown on the survey within the flag strip of the residential lot, which does not appear on the previously approved plan for the commercial lots or the most recent certificate of occupancy for the residence. The applicant should provide the lot and total lot coverages to determine whether the project meets town code requirements, label the subject path appropriately, and clarify who is responsible for the fencing in this area. As this is a modification, the board is not required to hold a public hearing, but may choose to hold one if it finds there is reason to suspect public concern. The Planning Department does not anticipate perceiving any public concern about the subject path and recommends a public hearing not be required. In conclusion, the Planning Department recommends the applicant submit a revised site plan, which labels the path and includes lot and total lot coverage amounts and calculations to demonstrate compliance and clarify the owner of the fence on the residential flag strip. The board should discuss if it wishes to hold a public hearing for this application, and if not, the Planning Department recommends the application will be ready for approval when the revised site plan is received.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to be heard?
Sure.
John, I did not mention that a condition of changing the order was for you to explain Wambles.
I thought it was gonna go really quickly. I don't have an explanation for Wambles. So I think that that Planning Department has put forth some things we have to give to you, the board, to push this application along. I have a question, which the town attorney is probably gonna have to answer. I don't expect the answer tonight. But maybe as part of the next mission before when I come here, we can we can figure this out. I'm thinking that, so the reason why we're here is that Wambles Two, which is the one to the east, has no C O, and as part of the application for the C O process, the walkway came up. If you look at the survey, the walkway, it is, there is a gravel walkway on this property which clearly needs site plan approval. I'm not so sure that the walkway between the two properties, which is on a residential property that we don't own, before the board. I'm happy to do that, but I'm thinking that it's within our, like, the site plan approval is, I guess my question is, can you give site plan approval off the property? I mean, maybe that's a town attorney question. I just figure we'd get it right and figure it out for next time.
What do you think?
Yeah, I'll talk to you about it.
It's unusual. It's not the same owner?
Uh, no, there's a residential property between the two commercial properties, so I think that residential property could probably put a gravel walkway there without site plan approval and if they wanted to. Clearly, they didn't, we did, but my point is, I think, I think what we should be looking at is the walkway that's on Wambles Two, because that's a change to the approved site plan. So I think what we should be doing is coming to you and saying, hey, we added this gravel walkway on our property, and we like to add, we like to modify our site plan approval to include that gravel walkway. I think adding in Wayne Scott Wambles One, which has a C O and doesn't have a walkway on it, really. And also, I don't know.
We can look into it.
You guys should look into it. Whenever the answer is, I'll come back to you next time with it.
Okay, all right, thanks, John. All right, so we'll have our discussion. So Bruce, would you leave that?
Sure. All right, so that's actually kind of interesting. That walkway gets taken out. I guess Wambles Two has no C O, but the walkway was added. I guess the other question is, what about the small portion of the walkway on, what is that, Wambles One?
Yeah.
Between the driveway and the walkway, has that has that been added as well? So we be reviewing that as well, because that's an addition?
I think the idea was that we should submit an application for that one as well. But I honestly, that's such a, rather than submit an application fee and have that, I might just remove that portion. Because it's a driveway there. So it's like one step, literally one step.
Yeah.
So I think what we would do is just remove that from that property.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, so I think this is pretty minor, then.
Right.
I would agree, we probably don't need a public hearing, but I think we do need property info, coverage, all those calculations.
Right. So are we thinking, so yeah, I was thinking initially that there were just two different properties. Do we need two different applications here? But if you're gonna be withdrawing, you're gonna you're gonna take away the portion of the pathway on Wambles One?
We would take that away, and and it might be that the town attorney tells us we do need to submit two applications. I think we have to wait to find out what.
All right. Okay.
And before you sit down, John, I just, do you have a question about the property owner? Is there an easement?
There is.
Yeah, there is. Okay, so I guess submitting that would be, yeah, where it goes. Okay.
You have you have permission from?
We have permission and an easement.
And an easement.
It does exist.
This is gonna be recorded, yeah.
Okay. And the fence, the fence as well, the stockade fence?
That's new to me. I don't know who, I assume we put it in, but I don't know that for sure. Could have been, could have been the residential property just to keep people from.
Wandering back there.
Yeah, I'll find out.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. We got a little work to do, yeah. And some answers from town attorney's office to get.
I would have brought up before, I just thought of it tonight when I was preparing, so.
Anything else, Bruce?
No, that's it.
All right. Any other comments? All right. So we'll ask the questions. I think the questions now maybe look a little bit different. Should the applicant submit a revised site plan highlighting the path and providing lot coverage and total lot coverage? I think we're now saying that that's on, depending on the answer from a town attorney's office, only on Wambles Two. We need information about the easement, right, as you've just described, and information about the fencing.
Yeah.
Does everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Provided on Wambles One, that little.
Right. Yeah, okay. So it's probably a little early to be asking ourselves this question, but does the board wish to require a public hearing? You know, I think at this stage of the game.
I don't think.
Seems very minor.
Especially if it ends up just being the one.
You know, some of us love public hearings, including me.
I won't hold you to, you can change your mind later.
All right, yeah. I don't think we need to actually record that answer. TBD, will the application be ready for approval when a revised site plan with the elements noted above is received? I think the answer is
Yes.
Probably, depending on the answer from town attorney's office and what it is you actually wind up submitting.
Yeah, Eric Chance for the Planning Department. I would say that you, you know, you have too much kinda up in the air right now to determine that based on what was said tonight.
Yeah.
But I also wanted to remind you, because it wasn't in the memorandum, we also need something indicating consent of the neighbor.
I think that's.
Does the easement, does the easement cover that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, I think we're good on that one. So let's move to eco acres, and who is covering that? Let's see, that is
I am.
Eric, absolutely, and Jen, okay. Great, Eric, please.
Okay. Let me just put the screening plan up on the screen for you. It was submitted. Okay, so hopefully you can see this plan in a second. So a public hearing was held on September twenty-fourth. One member of the public spoke at the hearing. The member of the public who spoke at the hearing was a neighbor of the subject parcel. Their concerns were primarily over potential visibility of new residences on the subject parcels from the neighbor's property and vice versa. Subsequent to the October eighth meeting, the board agreed that the public's concerns had been adequately addressed with the condition of screening along the common driveway. The specific condition recommended by the Planning Department was for a row of six-foot-tall evergreen screening along the southern boundary of the building envelope on Proposed Lots One and Two. So you can see on the map in front of you, that would be basically a row of screening of evergreen screening along the southern portions of both lots. However, the applicant submitted photographs along with a revised subwaiver map, which serves as a screening plan, which is what you see in front of you. The photographs reveal that the southern boundary of the subject parcel is already significantly screened with evergreen and other vegetation, and that only the area adjacent to the turnaround will require screening, as this area appears to have been cleared at some point. The Planning Department inspected the site on November twelfth. It does appear that existing screening along the southern property line is substantial, and that the only area with a significant gap appears to be the area adjacent to where the applicant's now proposed screening. The Planning Department finds the additional screening proposed in conjunction with existing vegetation should adequately screen the proposed lots on the subject property from those on neighboring lots, the board should determine if it agrees. The engineer and the fire marshal have already signed off on the project, so in conclusion, provided the board agrees, it appears that the application is ready for approval if you do feel that the public's concerns have been met. One extra point sort of included in the memo, but kind of after the memo, is that the map right now contains a notation that says that the reserved areas will be dedicated to a homeowners association. We had spoke about that previously. That is the applicant's decision, as long as it remains for passive recreational open space. But my understanding is that the applicant intends to deed the the reserved areas to the town, which is more customary. So if that, the applicant should address that, and if that is the case, then the map should be amended. It is specifically notation number six on the map that says homeowners association, that should be changed to the town of East Hampton, if that's the way they're going. They would submit that revised map, and then a resolution of approval, provided the board agrees, would follow, and that would reference the correct updated map with the updated notation.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Any comments, Mr. Tarbit?
No, I wanted to thank Eric. He and I worked this out over the last couple of weeks, and we are in fact giving it to the town.
Okay, we have word that they're interested. Okay, all right, good.
I really don't have anything further. I think you're right, the screening is definitely adequate, except for that one, one spot I've been there. So nothing more to add. I know you guys are surprised that I.
All right. Good, all right. Anybody else have comments on this one? It's pretty, it's pretty easy breezy, right? All right, so have the public's concerns been adequately addressed, and is the submitted screening plan, which I guess is now modified for what we're looking at up there, is that acceptable? Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're all in agreement on that? You're all ready?
Yeah.
Okay. And is the application ready for approval? I guess I would add, you know, pending clarification about the screening and the change in the dedication information on the
On the map.
Right, on the map.
I think the screening on that survey is is the.
Is the way, is the new proposed?
That is all.
Yeah.
Finalized.
Okay. So.
On that survey, because the one we have in our pack is different.
Yeah, yeah, so the one, so there is the more current survey, so that's already been done. So it's just a matter of the change, pending a change in the dedication to the town versus homeowners association. So given that, are we good?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, great. You're all done. Dismissed. Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Bye, John, thank you.
All right, our next matter is Elite Towers at Springs Fire Department, tier-three personal wireless service facility. And Eric, again, that's you, and Reed, that's you for the board, and I see the applicant is here. Okay.
Okay, at the time of the last review of the board on August twenty-seventh, the board stated that the landscaping and screening was acceptable, that it declared lead agency status, the board is the only involved agency, and that the application would be complete, ready to be scheduled for a public hearing after a secret declaration was made. The Planning Department had previously prepared a memorandum in E A F parts two and three for the board to review. However, it was discovered that the comments in the record from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation are outdated and do not reflect the currently proposed project. The applicant requested an adjournment until updated comments could be provided, and the E A F amended accordingly to reflect them. By letter dated November fourth, the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation stated, quoting, "Based upon this review, it is the opinion of O P R H P that no properties, including architectural and/or historical resources listed in or eligible for the New York State and National Register of Historic Places, will be impacted by this project." The applicants have also submitted a protected species impact assessment prepared by V H B Engineering dated November fourth since the date of the last planning board review. This assessment identifies five specific threatened or endangered species as identified by both federal and state entities. As a brief summary, this assessment concludes that there is little potential for harm to any of these identified species due to the lack of needed habitat or ongoing human disturbance. The northern long-eared bat is noted as the most likely species to be present. However, this is due to the presence of mature trees on the site, those being those greater than three-inch in diameter at breast height, of which only five are proposed to be removed. Additionally, pre-existing clearing and ongoing site activity make this an unlikely site for this species, and no examples have been observed on the project site. Planning Department agrees with the conclusions of the assessment that there is a low likelihood of a taking of any threatened or endangered species as a result of the proposed project. The Planning Department has prepared an environmental assessment form, parts two and three. A negative declaration pursuant to secret in chapter one twenty-eight of the town code is recommended. So in conclusion, the board should review the draft E A F and determine if any changes are needed. If no changes are required, then a secret declaration should be made, and the application will be scheduled for a public hearing. I will say two things in addition to this memo. One is, I would like to, you know, obviously, the board's review focuses on the E A F. I would like to sort of briefly go through the E A F part two and the the questions and the the boxes that we check in there, just to make sure that the board is comfortable with it. And then I also wanted to let the board know that we did receive a letter from a member of the of the public, an attorney representing a public group, that raised questions about the process here. But I will say, the Planning Department has reviewed it, and we recommend, we, our recommendation is still that you move forward with a secret declaration this evening and with a negative declaration. With that, what I'm going to do is screen share the E A F part two and just sort of briefly run through the major categories here. Obviously, the E A F part three has an attachment that has a more detailed explanation of the responses to each of these questions. But what I would like to do is sort of go through all eighteen of these categories somewhat briefly, and the board can stop me, you know, when it has a question about the draft E A F and the responses that were put in there. So the first category is impact on land. We don't anticipate any moderate or large impacts to land. We checked this box, yes, because there is land disturbance involved in this project. But as the board knows, it is a minimal area that's impacted. This is already a developed site, so we don't see the the potential for any moderate to large impacts. Geological features, there really are no unique geological features on the property. Same goes with surface water. There is no surface water on the property or within close proximity. Groundwater, the project site is over the the town's sole source aquifer, but there is not a water discharge anticipated. Flooding, this is not in a flood hazard zone. The area of the equipment enclosure and the macro pole is not within any known flood flood hazard area or area that routinely floods. Impacts on air, other than having an emergency generator for the facility, there really is no impact on air. Impact on plants and animals, as I previously said, there are threatened and endangered species identified as being potentially on the site within the area. However, most of those species that have, for example, one of them is the piping plover. The piping plover is a shorebird. We don't anticipate that on the property, and as I previously said, the the impact on the property as far as removal of trees is is minimal. Impact on agricultural resources, now, we don't anticipate the project will really have any direct impact on those, but there are agricultural properties in the vicinity. So we wanted to denote that, that there there are agricultural uses and active agricultural operations nearby, but we don't feel that any of the impacts that would result raise to the level of moderate to large. Impact on aesthetic resources is one of the, you know, more key categories in consideration and review of of the application. We checked yes, because obviously, as had been demonstrated in the visual renderings that were provided, the facility, the the pole would be visible from numerous areas of parkland. Those include Gerard Drive, Last Point. But, you know, as was demonstrated in the visual renderings, the the very top of the pole would be all that was visible. Even though you can see the pole from those locations, I don't think it can be reasonably said that there is any moderate to large impact on those resources. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, of course, we would check yes here. The site is in proximity of the Springs Historic District, including the Pollock Krasner House, which is on the National Register. So, you know, we we've identified the fact that this will impact historic resources. However, as you just heard from the updated comments from New York State Historic Preservation, they don't have any objection to this. They don't see impacts on any identified resources. And additionally, the Architectural Review Board has reviewed this and sent favorable comments to the Planning Board. Impact on open space and recreation is very much the same situation as the answer we gave to part nine, which is impact on aesthetic resources. This will be visible from open spaces, but we don't see that the impact will be moderate to large. The site number twelve, critical environmental area, those are special areas that are that are designated as such. This is not within one of those. Impact on transportation, we don't foresee any any significant impact there. Impact on energy, we checked yes, because they do have a generator. This is a facility that transmates, transmits radio frequencies. It will use electricity. But again, certainly no more so than any other wireless facility, and not to a degree that puts any significant demand on existing infrastructure. Impact on noise, odor, and light, we checked this yes mainly because of just operation during the time of construction, but then also again, because there's an emergency generator on the property. That would only be on it at a time of emergency and and for routine running of it, and there is a provision in the town code that allows generators in conjunction with wireless facilities. Impact on human health, we checked no here. It is a common thing that's brought up with wireless facilities of the fact that there's radiation and a radio frequency being being emitted. But everything has been checked by our wireless consulting firm and found to be in compliance with F C C standards. Consistency with community plans, we checked yes, just because, you know, there are height restrictions and and other you know, regulations in the zoning code that are meant to limit the height of structures. Obviously, wireless applications are somewhat, you know, well, are outside of those as applicable code restrictions. They don't need variances from them. But, you know, there is a deviation from the zoning code, so we just wanted to note that, but we certainly don't see the potential for any moderate to large impacts. This does not require any variances. It is consistent with the wireless master plan that was fairly recently adopted by the town. So, you know, which also identified a coverage gap in this area, so we we do feel that it is consistent. The the last category here is consistency with community character. The last category here is consistency with community character. And we checked, yes, on it, and you will see that this is the only area where a subbox was checked moderate to large. And that is part E, which is proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scaling character of the area. Obviously, this is a proposed 150-foot tall tower. It would be the largest, tallest structure in this area of Springs. But it is a wireless facility. It needs to be, it is a wireless macro facility that needs to be of a certain height in order to provide adequate coverage. Additionally, the applicants have mitigated the impacts that this will have by putting it in the middle of the property and by proposing a stealth monopole design, which is the least conspicuous for a macro facility, putting all of the equipment in the interior. However, we did feel that this is the largest potential impact that would result from this project and really specifically that inconsistency with the overall, really the height of buildings in the area and the proximity of residential properties. So, you know, we wanted to acknowledge that that we, you know, we do know that this is going to be a very tall structure. It will be visible from nearby residential properties. However, we don't feel that this rises to the level of moderate to large impact, really based on the mitigation that the applicants have offered and based on the visual renderings that have been submitted. So that really covers sort of the main categories of the EAF. I don't know if the board has specific questions or specific changes, but if so, this would be the time to have that that discussion. And I would bring the board back to really the the main point here, which is reviewing this document. We recommend that a negative declaration be made and then subsequently we would schedule a public hearing if that is done this evening.
Are there any specific questions for Eric regarding the EAF that he just reviewed? For us, I know we've all had an opportunity to look at this in the recent weeks. No specific question?
No.
Okay. All right, good. Reed.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. Yes, does the applicant wish to be heard?
Good evening. Greg Alvarez of Mono Law Group, 666 Old Country Road, Garden City, New York, here on behalf of the applicants. Hello again. I'll just say that we concur with the analysis that Eric has presented in terms of SECR. We, so we obviously respectfully request for a negative declaration this evening. I would like to note, as Eric had as well, this morning, we are at receipt of a letter from Robert Berg, who represents the Springs residents against the Lead Towers Association. He does not reference the specific residents in the area to make sure that, you know, they are, they are interested in this application, so we would just ask for that. In terms of, you know, the comments that are in there, certainly there are questions that were raised. In terms of this SECR discussion this evening, we believe that all of those questions have been asked and answered. But we also like to say that we, you know, we, you know, we welcome the opportunity for a robust discussion during the public hearing if this board is so inclined to grant that negative declaration. So, you know, if any of those issues that are raised and any others, certainly, we feel that that is the proper form for that. So this evening, we, again, we look for your declaration and we thank you for this process, this back and forth that's been going on in terms of our review of our submissions and making sure that we've gotten to this point in, you know, in solid shape.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Mr. Chair, I'm Robert Berg. May I make a couple of comments on my part? I know that you normally don't have a couple of comments, but this is an important point in your, you know, process. And sometimes there are a couple of hearings for a secret determination. You're not doing that. It's an option that you do have. It's not required by law, but it is an option that many planning boards do. And if you allow me to speak for a few minutes, I could perhaps clarify some points.
Yeah, well, you're right in saying that we do not typically do this, right? You know, in fact, we make a point to to avoid doing it because, you know, having public commentary when the meeting is not noticed for such is really, you know, kind of a conflict. I mean, that's really an issue for us. I, we suspected that you might want to speak tonight and I, we will allow it, but three minutes, that's it, that's it. Can you time that, Jen? And identify yourself for the record, please. Name and address.
My name is Robert Berg from the law firm of Robert J. Berg, P L L C, in Marinac, New York. I represent a number of residents who are opposed to the tower. They live right next to the tower, very close by. The tower currently presents a public safety hazard. If the thing falls over, it's going to crush some houses. If you move it into the parking lot of the fire station, if it falls over at that point, it's going to crush a bunch of cars and it might fall into the building and crush people inside the building. You really should not have a tower like this, which can fall and particularly in a hurricane or a giant nor'easter superstorm. It's a public safety hazard. It doesn't have to do with the wireless issue, which I understand you can't make a decision on, but you have a public safety danger here. You have ice that can fall from the tops of the tower. I've seen, you know, in an ice storm, the stuff melts and the stuff crashes down. It's going to go right next to the parking lot where you're sighting it here. So that's one issue. You actually don't have a need for this tower because you've put up towers right and left through town now. I can't believe it when I'm driving through. I looked by the recycling center, you got two giant towers going up there. I went by the Girl Scout camp today. You have a massive 185-foot tower there, which is going to provide enormous coverage here. You have the St. Peter's Chapel Tower for AT&amp;T, 70-foot tower. There's coverage everywhere. If you look at the FCC National Broadband Map, which I described in my letter, there's 100% coverage in the Springs, in this whole area now. The studies that they have provided you, they're old, they're before the activation of the antennas on the Girl Scout Camp Tower. The environmental issue, threatened birds, ospreys. Called the Springs, their mascot is the osprey. There are ospreys on virtually all of the cell towers around here. There was an osprey nest for five years or more on the very illegal tower that's in the fire station. Now, it was cleared off apparently in the last month or so, but there's been an osprey nest there for years. You have an osprey nest, I drove by this evening right before dusk to the Girl Scout Camp Tower. There's an osprey nest on the lower, the lowest level of the antenna arrays there. There's an osprey nest there already. You're going to have osprey nests there. You have eagles around here. I was driving in Montauk this summer in September, and there's an eagle perched on one of the new wireless, the small wireless facilities in town there, right across from John's Drive. You're going to get wildlife impacts here visually. I drove down this evening right before sunset again to the Lous Point area on, and you can see this thing. It's ugly. You had, one more thing, you did a positive declaration five years ago. That's an extraordinary thing to do, to have a positive declaration for a cell tower. It happens 1% of the time or less. And now you don't even really discuss it. Mr. Chance hardly discusses it, the positive deck here and differentiates things. What happened? The tower's 30 feet lower this time and it suddenly is not an impactful problem, but nonsense.
Okay. Thank you for sharing your concerns. I appreciate that. All right, Reed.
I'm actually representing Collapton, Verizon Wireless.
I'm sorry?
I represent Verizon Wireless, the Collapton. I'm amazed to say a couple of words.
You're with the applicant?
Correct.
Are you planning to respond to those, the remarks that were just made?
Yes.
I prefer that you not, that we not get into that conversation. Thank you. Reed?
Okay, thank you. I first want to take a moment and just recognize that anytime in the eight years that I've served on the planning board, a cellphone application or wireless facility comes up, it always generates excitement and a lot of controversy. I want to thank the planning department. I think, Eric, you did a real good job of walking us through the environmental assessment form. And I have read the Protected Species Impact Assessment that was recently submitted. I will tell you, Mr. Berg, I know you're visiting from Larchmont, but there is absolutely a demonstrated wireless service deficiency in the Springs. I'm in the fire department. I hear about guys complaining about it. I think it's a real problem. So, and just another point, you had also talked about the relocation of the pole to the middle of the property. We've been told that this pole, the way they're designed now, and this was news to me, that they're collapsible so that if something were to happen, it doesn't just fall 150 feet in one certain direction, it collapses down. So I've also been told that. But I think that the, I think that your comment about not, no need for the tower doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. So I agree that I think the SECR does. I think we should make a negative declaration on SECR. I definitely think we should have a public hearing on this matter. And I hope that the public hearing, I think it would be most productive for the public hearing to focus on this specific application and not the application that was submitted 10 years ago, because you're comparing an apple to an orange. That's all I have.
Thanks, Reed. Does anyone else want to comment from the board?
So all we're doing today is we're deciding whether or not to deliver a positive or negative declaration on SECR.
Yeah.
There are other issues that I think might come up. My opinion, some knows, but I think it's time to do that. That'll come up after the public hearing. We'll hear more about these issues.
Yeah, we'll have an opportunity.
As far as the declaration on SECR, I think this is a different application than the other one where we made a positive declaration. But it's a stealth pole, it's lower. So I, I think it's a thorough review of all the possible areas of concern with regard to SECR. I think that I'm comfortable with a negative declaration.
Okay.
I just wanted to say one quick, one quick thing. I agree with what Reed has said and what Lou has said. And I also just want to express, as someone who works in Springs every summer at Ashwag Hall, you know, which is one of the closest sites to this proposed pole, there is definitely a lack of service. The, the people that I work with every, every week at the Ashwag Hall Farmers Market, you know, it presents a limit to the business that they can do. It also presents a safety issue. You know, we've had times that we needed to call medical professionals or 911 or the police and it's, it's a safety issue. So, but I am definitely in favor of the negative declaration as well, because I think it was very well, well researched and done and thanks to the planning department.
You know, just to say, kind of to wrap up our board discussion, that we have been talking about this application for a good long time and we have been through the EAF. We've talked a lot to the planning department about this. We, I don't want to get into a back and forth about other comments that were expressed earlier, but, you know, the truth is, this is necessary. The truth is, this is safe. This is not the same tower in the same location as the previous application, which was, this is not that application. So I will ask the question of the board, does the planning board wish to make a negative declaration pursuant to SECR in chapter 128 of the town code for this project?
Yes.
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 Unanimous, everyone in agreement?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Is the applicant ready to be scheduled for a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're good to go. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Eric. Before we move on to Wayne Scott Commercial Center preliminary subdivision supplemental draft environmental impact statement completeness review, let's see, is Peter with us online?
You have a lot of people on, online right now.
Okay. All right. But Peter, our consultant, is he with us?
Yes, someone.
Okay, thank you. Jen is recused from this matter. Thank you, Jen. You're not going to be back to the regular meeting. Right, okay. Which is perfectly fine. All right. So before we begin, you know, I know that there are, obviously, I hear that there are, you know, a number of interested parties who are listening in, watching on LTV, which is great, you know, please stay and observe the conversation. I know there are people in the audience who may want to share their thoughts on this. This is not a public hearing. This is not a time for public comment. This is purely about us making a determination as to whether or not the preliminary supplemental DEIS is complete or not. That is our sole objective for today, so we're going to keep the conversation to that. And there will be plenty of opportunity for folks to comment on this when, if it's judged to be complete soon, if it's not judged to be complete after we get a complete DEIS, we will certainly have a public hearing and people's voices will certainly be heard on this. So with that, we'll kick this off and Tina is going to start and introduce our consultants and talk through their thoughts about where we are. And the applicant I see is with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Tina Lagren with the planning department. We do have a consultant team with us. Some are participating. Leah Zoom, Peter Faro from AKRF, they are our lead planning consultants. LKMA is the traffic consultant. We've got, oh, Gwen Sodarichi from AKRF also here, sorry, I didn't see her. And then we also have Dan Russo and Rob Stout from White Osterman and Hannah, their secret counsel. And then in person here is Vinnie Guardiello, he's the town engineer. He focuses on stormwater and subdivision review. I'm going to just leave the subdivision map up if there's questions about that. And I'm going to introduce the discussion of our completeness review for the Wayne Scott Commercial Center preliminary supplemental draft environmental impact statement. I'm going to call it the PSDIS. I'm trying to say that consistently. So I'm going to just introduce it and then I'm going to pass it over to Peter later for warranty of comments. So the completeness review determines whether the preliminary SDIS has adequately provided the information that was required in the March 2025 SDIS scope in the purposes of commencing public review in accordance with SECR. In the report we gave you, we gave you the specific citation that shows where we are in the SECR process and the SECR law governing what we're doing. For the reasons set forth in the memorandum from the town's planning consultants, the planning department is recommending that the planning board, as a secret lead agency, determine that the PSDIS is incomplete and that the applicant revise it and resubmit according to the comments that we have issued. I'll also note that while we feel the document is still incomplete, it did contain a lot of the information that was requested in the scope. The completeness review comments we're offering this evening do not address our substantive review of the analyses or conclusions that are in the PSDIS. We've spoken a bunch of times throughout the memorandum and it's important that we make that distinction. The report is about wanting to speak to presence or absence of information, and that's what's required in SECR and that's what we've done. We haven't reviewed the substance of the analysis. Once the applicant revises the document according to these comments issued today, we'll determine if they've been addressed. Once the document is complete with respect to the scope, we'll recommend a public hearing be held and that the SECR process continue. It's noteworthy as well that the PSDIS is not the only thing at issue. The applications associated with the SDIS must also be reviewed. There are several applications at issue, the preliminary subdivision, the planned industrial park, special permit, and the two site plans for the existing uses site that are going to remain. Formal site plans have not been filed for the two existing uses, but the applicant has stated that they will file these no later than the SDIS. And that's important because the SDIS necessarily analyzes the impacts of complete applications. So we will need that information. As I said earlier, while for the PSDIS, we're only providing completeness comments, we have stayed mostly on completeness for the applications, but there are also some substantive issues. issues that have been mentioned in the comments that are important as the applicants progress towards completeness, that those are addressed. Before passing into the consultant team, I do want to remind the board and the applicant that the Suffolk County Planning Commission comments on the DEIS and the preliminary subdivision must still be addressed. The applicant provided responses that last year or so, they do need to be updated. The board does need to make that referral to the SCPC in accordance with the general municipal law. The referral is a requirement. So I'm going to ask Peter from AKRF to give only the high level, highest level completeness report that AKRF, Rayner, and LKMA prepared. AKRF's report's 14 pages supplemented by additional technical analysis for Rayner and LKMA. You have all the reports, and all the consultants are here to answer your questions. If the applicant has questions, the planning department is happy to meet with them and their consultant team to go through the report and explain exactly what's meant if anything's unclear. We're happy to explain the comments further, but we don't expect them to change seasonally from, from that interaction. So Peter and Mark's are going to provide a brief summary of the issues detailed in the technical memorandum, focusing on the issues that we feel are the most important omissions from the PSDIS, those that relate directly to our ability to clearly understand the project's scope, relate to the potential for significant project impacts, and those that relate to mitigation, whether what is proposed is practical and will be effective. So in conclusion, and you'll hear the detail from Peter, the technical reports provide the detailed reasoning that the planning department recommends that the planning board find the PSDIS incomplete and required to be revised and resubmitted. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Thanks, Tina. And thank you, board, and, and those in attendance. My name is Peter Faro. I'm with the planning and environmental consulting firm, AKRF. My office is in White Plains, and I just want to begin with, with echoing something that Tina said. Obviously, we're talking about the completeness of the PSDIS, which necessarily means that we're discussing what we believe is, is, is not within the PSDIS that was required. But we, we wanted to note that, like Tina said, that document that was submitted does contain a lot of new information, a lot of revised information, and is generally responsive to many aspects of the SDIS scope. So obviously, we're focusing here on the negative space of what wasn't included, which I think was obviously our purpose tonight and something that we need to do, and you as the board have the obligation to do. But I just wanted to kind of put that up front to begin with. So in, I'll try to do kind of high level like Tina said. Our first grouping of comments discuss the need for updates to the project description. This is a very large and somewhat complicated project involving many discretionary actions of the planning board, subdivision, site plan, special permit. There are now roadway modifications and abandonments, and there are lots of pieces, and, and some of those pieces were not clearly described in enough detail for us to really understand them and then understand the resulting impacts of those plans. So information regarding buffering and phasing and specific elements of the site plans need to be provided, as, as do complete sets of the subdivision plat and the site plan. Obviously, excuse me, these are not plans that need to be ready to be approved, but they need to be approvable, and we need to see the full slate of information. There were a number of suggestions in the SDIS scope regarding changes or suggestions for the proposed project's layout to enhance the consistency of the project with the planned industrial park special permit requirements. Many of those were not included, which was contemplated by the SDIS scope. It didn't mandate inclusion of those, but we do need to understand the rationale for not including them because that goes directly to the consistency of the plat with the planned industrial park sub, special permit criteria. In addition, as you see on the plat in front of you, in the bottom right-hand corner of the plat drawing, there's a new east-west road, which is up and down on this plat being proposed within the subdivision that would connect to Daniel's Hole Road. And that new road crosses Hedges Lane before it intersects Daniel's Hole. The applicant provided research showing that it appears that Hedges Lane is not a private road in the sense that it is not owned by the adjacent parcels. If, if that is actually the case, as we dig in, if it is a town road, there's now a new action here which involves modifications to the town road as well as abandonment of a portion of a town road, which is that curvilinear section in the bottom right that would no longer be required. At the same time, there's a historic lot line modification that the applicant had received approval for, for the residentially zoned lots immediately north and south of that new roadway. And so we need to just understand how all of these different pieces fit together so that procedurally we are making sure everything is aligned and consistent, and we understand the impacts and the downstream impacts of these various decisions that the board is being asked to make. With respect to stormwater, I want to point out there, for the board, there is, there was one of the larger changes to the proposed subdivision layout was a design for the plat, and this design places the formerly proposed design, which was, the applicant formally proposed to catch stormwater from the roadways within catch basins and reaching pools, and then on each lot, there would be a rain garden to handle the stormwater from that individual lot. The town had suggested pretty strongly that a positive drainage system was required for this plat. The applicant incorporated a positive drainage system. It is, as you'll see in, in the comments from the, the town's consulting engineer, somewhat atypical of a design, but it is a positive design nonetheless. And in this design, water from the roadway is captured in catch basins and then piped to larger bio-retention basins that are placed in the rear of the various groupings of the lots. And those bio-retention basins serve to capture and treat the stormwater from the proposed subdivision roadways as well as the individual lots themselves. So that is a big change to the plat, and I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Some additional information on this system is required for us to fully understand it, including various engineering design that, that Vinnie Guardiello has laid out in his memos. And we need to understand how these systems would be maintained moving forward. Obviously, there would be easements and for maintenance and access. We need to understand physically as well as procedurally how those maintenance access agreements would, would be effectuated within the plan. So we need to, again, we need to drill down a little bit more on that. With respect to traffic, there, there was a new traffic study provided as requested. It was based on a study that was provided by the applicant in December 2023 after the original DEIS. It did answer many of the questions that we had, but there are a couple, three main issues that are still outstanding that need to be addressed before the document can be considered complete. One is we need some additional information on the data that was used to calibrate the model, and this is the real, real world observations of queuing and other traffic data that, that was used to then verify the model and make sure the model is predicting traffic correctly in the existing condition so that we could feel predicted in the future condition. So we just need some of that data to ensure that we agree with that calibration. We need, the SDS needs to contain an analysis of a second, a different trip generation estimate for the project. This was required in the SDIS scope, and we need to kind of get some more information on this and have a, have an analysis be undertaken that looks at this site and assumes that there could be, would be a higher level of traffic generated than is currently proposed. And we, we went through many different ways that this exercise could be accomplished, and we just need to get that information into the SDIS so that it can be evaluated. And then finally, some details on the proposed mitigation that is provided by the applicant in terms of their layout plans and exactly how some of the physical improvements would be implemented is required, as well as, there are two mitigation measures proposed which consist of restricting left turn lanes off of Georgia Drive and Old Montauk Highway onto Montauk Highway. The state DOT has said that they're not, they're not certain that, that it's an effective or appropriate mitigation measure. They didn't say no, they just said they're not sure that this is appropriate. Understand if those measures are not implemented, what the results would be for the rest of the traffic study. Would there be impacts somewhere else? Would the impacts change? With respect to the analysis on subsurface contamination, we're asking for a little bit more information in a couple places. One has to do with providing kind of a mashup, if you will, of various pieces of information that were provided in the SDIS. So some graphics that overlay the previous site uses, the locations of previous site uses that have the potential to impact the subsurface with the sampling locations with the sampling results, just kind of putting them all onto a single figure, and it'll probably be more than one figure, but it'll be on different areas, focused on different areas of the site. All of that information's in the EIS, but it is, because the site is so large and there is quite a long sampling history, it would be very helpful to put that information onto kind of a single grouping of figures. In addition, we need to drill down on groundwater. It wasn't clear from the document on the current use of groundwater within the site. So we need some clarity there, as well as the applicant is still proposing and requesting to use groundwater for non-potable purposes in the future subdivision. And while the town has previously expressed their opinion that that was not appropriate, if the applicant continues to propose this, we need more information on the measures by which they would mitigate impacts because of the contamination that is in that groundwater, even though it's being used for non, non-potable purposes. With respect to the analysis of wastewater and nitrogen loading, we requested some more additional information to fulfill the scope's requirement of an evaluation of a neutral sewage treatment plant on the site. So information, a little more information as the scope had required regarding different technologies that could be utilized on the site and the efficacy of a sewage treatment plant to remove contaminants other than, you know, primarily nitrogen, right? So how, how effective would an SDIS typical IA system in removing these other contaminants, which was something that the scope had requested? With respect to the calculations for the potential noise impacts from the operations of a full buildout, just were not correctly calculated. They simply need to be updated and corrected. That kind of carries through and trickles down through the rest of the analysis. So we need to get those updated in that chapter. And that is pretty much the high level. Obviously, we do go into more detail if the board has questions, and I know Vinnie and Bobby are here as well to talk about their areas because I did my best to talk about, summarize their, their highly technical work as well. But what we attempted to do in these completeness memos was provide a roadmap and path forward and said, this is what was required, and if we, if we can update the document pursuant to this memo, these memos, that we'll be able to have an SDIS that's complete and ready for public comment. And, and I'll echo what Tina said, we're happy to, you know, have meetings with the applicants and their consultants to discuss these comments and how best to address them and what's appropriate if, if they would like. Okay, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much, Peter. I appreciate it. So before I ask Mr. Tindall or and/or Mr. Egan to, to make a comment, you know, I just want to say that, you know, this was an attempt on Peter and Tina's part to really capture at a high level, you know, what the comments were and, you know, where we feel there's some, there is a lack of completeness on certain issues that we need to, you know, we need to, to hear definitively on before we can move forward. And I don't think we anticipated necessarily having a very detailed discussion tonight about, you know, each individual item that's been requested. I think there are over 100 items that are, that are noted, but this is a giant file, you know, and this is a complicated project. And you guys have done, you know, a great job in, in this, this last submission in getting us much closer to what we need to have to move forward. So I don't know that we really want to have a, you know, point-by-point decision, but we'd love to hear from you at this point before we have our discussion as a board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Egan, applicant's attorney. There's no need for any detail. We've got, we received the comments, we understand them. We thank you for turning it around so quickly, and we'll do the same. You know, the thing I wanted to add tonight is that the new submission will have a new subdivision plat, which is going to be different because it's going to reflect the fact that as we started this project eight years ago, it was six lots that were being subdivided. Lot 6.3 and 6.7 have been sold within the last couple of weeks, as, as well as the masonry supply business. So that is going to result in a reduction of acreage of eight and a half, 18 and a half percent. And I wrote a map, the new map is not quite finalized and ready for prime time. The board can expect a commensurate reduction in a number of lots. So hopefully you'll take that as an early Christmas present. We'll be back to you in a couple of months and Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. I appreciate that very much. All right. So, you know, recognizing that this is a very complicated, multi-layered project, and you know, given that we've all had an opportunity to read the analysis of our planning department and of our various consultants, and have had an opportunity to speak one-on-one. and of our various consultants and have had an opportunity to speak one-on-one to all of our resources to kind of get a handle on this thing, I think that we are in a position to agree with our resources that it is incomplete and that the analysis that was sent to you folks is, you know, what needs to be addressed and you've agreed to do it. So with that, I would, unless there's any other commentary, I would like to make a motion to deem this, this is incomplete at this point. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's where we are. And I think that we, Eric, we'll have, next week, we'll have a formal resolution to that effect. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Good. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Peter, Gwen, Bobby.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. All right, moving on to our regular meeting. The first thing is the Hubbard Site Plan Resolution of Approval. And Bruce, I think that is you.
Yep. In the matter of the application of Hubbard Site Plan Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-49-4-12.1, this is a site plan approval to legalize the now-existing enclosed living space, which was previously an approved screen porch, which is an area of about 363 square feet. I have read the determination and move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, carried unanimously. All right, moving on to Skennely Subwaiver Modification Resolution of Approval. That would have been Jen. Does that, could you take that, Ava?
Sure. In the matter of the application of Skennely Subwaiver Modification Suffolk County Tax Map 300-19-1-22.1, with regards to the property location at 20 Foxborough Road in Montauk, I have reviewed the resolution and passed for its approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second carried unanimously. While you're on a roll.
I gotta get my script hold on. Schedule? This one?
Yes, St. Michael's Basement Alteration.
All right. A public hearing is hereby scheduled to be held at Town Hall 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on December 17, 2025 at 6:30 PM or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider the said application of St. Michael's Basement Alteration Site Plan Suffolk County Tax Map 300-172-2-9.4. At the, oh, that's it. Files can be viewed and comments can be filed in accordance with the specifics in the public hearing notice, which appears as part of the meeting records tonight and will be published in the paper of record no less than 10 days before said hearing date. I move to approve this schedule of public hearing.
Second question.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the schedule, the minutes, the minutes, does anyone, does anyone have any comments on the minutes?
I saw just a couple of markings. Yeah, I think the minutes have been great compared to what I've seen in years past. So, Kunchova, on B, at the very end, I think you accepted the project as a type-two action. I think that's what you meant to say. And then going down to D, third paragraph down, if you could just put down Members Jones as opposed to Reed, that would be good.
Is that it?
That's all I saw. I don't know.
All right. Read like it's like Frank said, you'll say Frank, you know who we're talking about. Yeah, right. Exactly. All right. Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Okay. All right. How about the final move for tonight?
Make a motion to close the meeting.
And I'd like to, oh, seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.